In January 2021, they created Barlow Printing, which is actually the business that used to be in this building. If you go out there, it says Barlow Printing on the building. It was printing a business for quite a while. But they adopted that name. And then in June of, or excuse me, July of 2021, during their renewal, we recognized the name change and made adjustment to their application. So then in September 2022, we received an application from HC Solutions of California that they were interested in purchasing basically the equity of Barlow Printing. And that is the application you have before you today. One of the changes that we've made is previously back in 2019 when we first permitted, I'm just going to say Barlow Printing for lack of this word clarity. We approved two types of licenses. We approved a manufacturing license and a distribution license. Some of the activities that they did under the umbrella of manufacturing are really cultivation activities, which are processing, it's called processing. And that's like the drying, the curing, and the trimming of cannabis flower. Those, that is a special license type that the city add, excuse me, that the state added after we had adopted our regulations. We don't have that license type, but we do associate it with, so we allowed it to occur previously, but we now, we associate those with cultivation. And we want to keep the cultivation activities with the cultivation permits and manufacturing as be like, if you're producing a product from cannabis. So anyway, the processing activities that did occur, we're not allowing to occur anymore. So this will be a straight distribution service. And that means that they'll be accepting tested prepackaged goods from other manufacturers and growers, and then distributing those goods to other retail facilities, either storefront or delivery services. They can also store product for other licensee holders. And I guess with that, it's really fairly straightforward. The resolution on page 55, staff recommends that you approve the resolution granting a commercial cannabis permit to Barlow Printing under this ownership group. And that's all I have to say. And I'm available for questions. I also do want to say that we have representatives from the company here who would like to introduce themselves, and they are also available for any questions or comments that you have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Did, do they want to make a presentation? Is that what I understand, JP? Or?
I think it's not a presentation, but an introduction.
So, there we go.
Sure. My name's Chris Candelario. Thank you, first of all, for your time. I appreciate you having us here. I'm actually the new president of the company, so it's been about three months for me. I've been, I live in Sonoma County, I've been here for 25 years. I hate talking about myself, so excuse me if I sound a little awkward. But I live with my wife and two daughters, and I take a lot of pride in my community. And I want you guys to know that we're going to do our best to be great operators. And I have 20 years of distribution experience, 13 years of liquor and wine prior to cannabis. I've been doing cannabis for seven years. But happy to answer any questions and really appreciate you guys taking a look at the application.
Hi, and hi to Mayor Harvey and the council. Thank you all for having us. My name is Alyssa Klemmer. You maybe see my name on some of the emails or the application. I'm the compliance manager for the Humble and Fume Group of Entities. And I have also worked in Cotati on some other licensed cannabis businesses that you've had. So I'm familiar with your jurisdiction and am very excited to be back in Cotati working with you all. It was great to know that when I took this role, I would be somewhere familiar with rules and regulations that we could work within. So thank you all for having us and considering our application.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. And I guess if you guys want to hang around in case there are any questions, that would be greatly appreciated. So with that, Sylvia, do you have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
Yes, I want to appreciate JP for explaining. At first, I was a little confused because it seemed like it was already permitted for distribution, but it's a new company. So my understanding then is that some of the activities are being rolled back a little bit, where there was cultivation previously, now it's mainly distribution?
Yes, exactly. The business type will be distribution only. We won't be pursuing the second license type.
Okay. Thank you. That's my question.
Ben, do you have any questions?
Yes, thanks. An ownership structure that requires a flow chart in the staff report just makes me wonder. So you said you're president of the company. Are you president of Humble and Fume, or Green Acres, or HC Solutions, or HC Solutions of California, or Barlow Printing, or Henry's Original?
I am president of the distribution operation, so I am the person operating the business daily. There are different investor groups that have funded the company. But I guess I am the day-to-day person that runs the business. I do report to investors and our corporate company, which is a public company.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Sure.
And in Chris's defense, he probably hasn't seen that flow chart yet. So forgive me for not sharing it, but that complicated corporate structure is one that we consider more of like a theoretical above us, where we tend to work a little more locally.
Ben, does that answer your question?
Yep, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Kay, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I didn't hear the name. Which company are you the president of?
Humble and Fume Distribution.
Okay, great. So yeah, my one question was, and maybe this is more for John, there's no issues with all the funding coming from Canada with, you know, federal cannabis distribution?
Not to my knowledge. I'm sure the state permiters would have, or licensers would have pointed that out to us if that were an issue under state law.
Okay. Not that I have anything against Canada. I'm like, wait, that was just surprising to me.
To speak a bit to that, the state has approved this ownership structure on partner licenses as well. So we're familiar with the state's expectations, and we assume that without any big surprises, that they'll be happy to approve our distribution license in Cotati as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, is that all your questions?
Yes.
Okay. I do have one question, and it's probably for the chief. For obvious reasons, there is not a security plan in here, and I just wanted to be sure that the chief finds everything satisfactory, especially considering some recent events that have happened.
Yes, Mayor. So you point out that the security plan's not in the packet, and that's because it's confidential, so it's not in the packet. So this is an existing business already, and I've approved it in the past. So what's beneficial here is it's, there's already a structure that's been approved in the past for the cannabis business, so alarms and different mechanisms are already in place. And if there's any changes in the future, JP always shares that with me for my review for any future additions or changes in business. So I guess bottom line, Mayor, I'm comfortable with moving forward with this.
Okay, thank you for that. And then my next question is for the applicant. There's a section in here about your personal policies and procedures, and I just would like to put out there that when hiring individuals, if all qualifications are equal, I would like to see that if it would be possible for you to give a preference to Cotati residents if all is equal?
Absolutely, and we plan to support the businesses here, of course, in addition to that. So absolutely understood.
Great, great. Thank you, thank you for that. So with that, if there are no more questions, then I would be looking to open this up for public comment. And Kevin, could you please handle that for me?
We're going to start on Zoom since the only public is at the podium at this time. So speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, then I would be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion, a motion that the City Council and the City Cotati award a commercial cannabis permit to Barlow Printing LLC, a wholly owned subsidiary of HC Solutions of California LLC, to allow cannabis distribution activities under state license type two or 11? 11, distributor at 481 Aaron Street, PA, number 22/16.
Do we have a second? Great, we have a motion and a second. Kevin, can you please do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Rivers?
Aye.
Councilmember Lemus?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey?
And so that passes unanimously, and thank you, and welcome to Cotati, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you. We will now move on to the next item, which is creation of an in-lu tree fund and in-lu tree planting program. And the staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. This evening, Carla Duncan from the Community Development Department will be presenting this item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Carla Duncan, and I'm a permit technician with the City of Cotati, and today I'm going to present a proposal to create an in-lu tree fund and tree planting program for the city. Next slide, please. So currently, most trees are protected under Cotati's Tree Preservation and Protection Program, which is Chapter 17.54 of the Municipal Code. Any tree with a circumference of 12 inches or more cannot be removed without the approval of staff first. Oak trees are even more heavily protected since they are vital native species to California and require City Council review to be considered for removal. If staff receives an application to remove a tree that does not hold significant cultural and/or environmental value, and especially if the tree poses a risk to life and safety, a tree removal permit will be issued under the condition that either replacement trees are planted or in-lu fees are paid. Depending on the type and size of tree removed, multiple trees may be required to replace a single tree removed. This is sometimes not feasible for every property, especially on smaller lots. An alternative to remedy this removal is that an applicant pays a fee for each tree removed on their property. These fees are intended to cover the cost of planting and caring for new trees, therefore balancing out the impacts of removal of existing trees within the city. Next slide, please. The Tree Preservation and Protection Ordinance states that these in-lu fees are to be placed into an in-lu tree fund. However, currently Cotati does not have a separate tree fund for this purpose, and these fees currently go into the general fund. Since these fees get placed into the general fund, it's more difficult to efficiently track and allocate these funds toward their intended purpose. While there have been a few public works landscaping projects that have incorporated these funds, a majority of these fees remain unutilized. Additionally, there is no official program in place to use these funds to their maximum potential and therefore diminish the impacts of tree removal in Cotati. Next slide, please. Staff recommends the creation of an in-lu tree fund to allocate tree removal permit or in-lu fees into a separate fund from the general fund. This new fund will improve tracking capabilities and ensure that these fees collected are utilized for their intended purpose, which is to care and plant for new trees in the city. This will allow Cotati to apply and maintain the fees as intended by the tree ordinance and is not actually creating a new use for the funds. The attached draft resolution proposes to create this new in-lu tree fund. Next slide, please. As previously mentioned, there are presently few opportunities for these fees to be utilized, and there are funds available to cover the costs of planting new trees in order to alleviate the impacts of removing trees. To address this, staff proposes to create Plant a Tree Cotati, which is a program that would use these funds to help residents purchase trees on their private property within Cotati. This program would allow Cotati residents to purchase up to two trees per year, with at least one tree required to be a California native, and the other can be an ornamental or fruit tree, ideally one that's better suited to our area's climate. Residents would be required to show proof of purchase and planting of the tree within city limits, and size requirements and price limits would also apply. The Community Development Department would administer the program, and it would be promoted on social media, the city's website, and at events such as the public, or the farmer's market. Lastly, neither of these recommendations are considered a project under SEQA, and the primary financial consideration would be creation of a new revenue account to place the fees into. With the program, there would be some staff time that would go toward the program's implementation and maintenance. Next slide, please. This concludes the presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you so much for that, Carla. Sylvia, do you have any questions?
I do, thank you. I want to just say I was admiring the olive trees that were in the PowerPoint. I think it'd be nice to have an area that had a nice set or grove of olive trees here in Cotati. My question was, the program, I know it's intended to buy two trees per year, is any maintenance or other costs also involved for the trees or just the purchase of the trees?
So no, it would just be for the purchase of the trees.
Okay, okay. Okay, because, yeah, in the language, I think it said to cover the costs, but that's for the city, right? The city plants trees, then it's for the cost of purchasing, planting, irrigating, and maintaining each tree? I think the initial?
So that's correct. The requirements, or I guess the specific language that directs the fee to be collected does apply it to maintenance, but because this program is intended to operate on private property, it would be the responsibility of the property owner to maintain those trees once the cost of planting is covered by this program.
Okay, thank you.
And I would highlight, this program is conceptual right now, so staff is essentially presenting it to get the fund created, and we thought this would be a way to actually implement the intent of these funds and also benefit residents and property owners in Cotati. And so it's, as I mentioned, conceptual. We're interested in any feedback or comments the council has as we finalize the program and move towards implementation.
Sylvia, do you have any other questions?
No, that was the question I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ben, do you have any questions?
Yes, thanks. I love it. I love the idea of the new program. Have you thought about how it might work with multifamily, condo kind of things, where individuals don't own their parcels, owned by an HOA or something like that? Anyway, maybe that's more a comment as you develop the concept. I'd like to make sure that the funds are available for use in those settings as well. And that's all, Mayor Harvey.
Thank you. Did, was there any comment to add to that?
No, they just nodded.
Okay, they're nodding. I can't see.
It's an excellent comment, and we absolutely support that, and would look to ensure all property owners, even commercial property owners, would have access to the program.
Oh, perfect. Okay, great. Kay, do you have any questions?
Just, yeah, a quick clarification. So this is for anywhere on private property, not just like, you know, in the front or where it shows?
Yeah, we feel that it, because the intent is in some ways to offset some of the impacts, including greenhouse gas reduction and carbon sequestration, and sometimes the trees that are being proposed for removal are also in backyards or areas that are not visible to the public. So we feel that it's, the benefits outweigh the kind of perceived or the potential for a lack of full public enjoyment of the trees being planted, because the benefits of obviously carbon sequestration and some of the heat island effects that can be addressed through shade are kind of community-wide.
Okay, no, I mean, I think this is great. It's just been my experience in the past, it was only like ones in the sidewalk, right? So this is great. We don't really have sidewalks everywhere, so that wouldn't really be fair. So this is great. Thank you.
Is that all, Kay?
Yes, that's all. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, my question, thank you, Damian, for giving me an answer. I was, in the staff report, it talked about that any previously collected funds would be moved to this new account if we so passed this, and I was curious as to how much was there, and it sounds like there was approximately, in the neighborhood of $4,000. So I think that that's a good start for this. I do understand that sometimes when trees have to be removed, they're removed for various reasons, and there's reasons why you wouldn't want to replace them, especially if they're causing problems, you wouldn't want to recreate the same problem. So I think that the concept of allowing trees to be planted by residents, I think is a really novel idea. So hopefully that will serve its purpose. So with that, I will open this up for public comment. Kevin, would you mind facilitating that for me, please?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. We'll go with the Zoom attendees. If you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, great. So, yeah, I think that this is a great idea, and I would be looking for a motion.
I move that the City of, the Council of the City of Cotati adopt the resolution directing the creation of an in-lu tree special revenue fund and an in-lu tree program.
Second.
A motion and a second. Kevin, could you please do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Rivers?
Aye.
Councilmember Lemus?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey?
Yes. So that also passes unanimously, and we will move on to the next item, which is our recognition and flag policy. It's coming back again. So Damian, are you going to take this, or?
I will, Mayor Harvey. Thank you. So, yeah, so it's back, and this is a, just a quick brief on where we were before on June 27th of this year, the, even though it said 2022, it's 2023, in case anyone noticed that typo, it wasn't really that long ago, it was just like a month ago. So the City Council provided initial feedback to staff on potential proclamations and requested certain updates to the draft policy, and that's, in the draft policy that's attached, it's, the edits, at least as I understood them, are included in red line strikeout to be obvious. And the additions to the proclamation table are bolded, and so there are also, the additional proclamations or ideas for proclamations that came up are in that table. So on the, on the policy, I thought probably a good way to handle this, Mayor, would be to just go through the policy, confirm that it meets the council's needs, and then go through the exercise of assigning organizing leads on the table, and noting if there's any flags or flag raising ceremonies for any of the listed proclamations. And one, just one note to the council, there was some comments received by Councilmember Rivers, which she should have, and the main, I think the main effect of that is, well, she has expressed her desire for some, to be the organizing lead for some of the proclamations, but with respect to the policy and the first whereas, the request was to remove the word "potentially" from that first whereas in the resolution, and then correcting a typo on packet page 69 of the policy, which reads, "All requests, including the proposed text for proclamations, must be directed to the City Manager's Office for review and placed on the agenda consistent," so it says "consist," but "consistent" is the typo correction with the process and the current City Council rules. But with that, I'd be happy to take any questions or additional suggestions.
Sylvia, questions?
Actually, we reviewed and agreed with Councilmember Rivers' comments on the, on the policy. So, yeah, I don't have questions about it.
Okay. Ben?
No questions.
Okay. Kay?
I agree with my own comments that I made in the email and put those forth. Thank you.
I'm so glad you agree with your own comments. That would be really dreadful if you decided that you didn't. So with that, so since we're going to handle this in two pieces, Damian, do we want to vote on it in two pieces, or vote on it all at once, or?
I would suggest two separate motions and votes.
Okay, then I will open this up for public comment. Kevin, can you facilitate that public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, so then I'd be looking for a motion on the policy.
I'll make a motion that the City Council approve the policy of the City Cotati adopting recognition and ceremonial flag policy. Are we doing it separate, or is it together, the resolution?
We'll do them separate, and then we'll do the table.
Okay, so a motion that the City Council and the City Cotati adopt the ceremonial flag policy.
Second.
I'm sorry, can we do the amendment of the changes that were suggested?
Oh, yes.
Well, so the changes in red line or plus consistent? Or are we asking for more than?
Let me start over. So I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution of the City Council and City Cotati adopting the ceremonial flag policy with the changes that were noted on, with the changes that were noted in the policy, in that first whereas, removing, it says "potentially."
And also correcting "consistent."
And also the, yes, and also the correct "consistent," correct the consistent error as well.
Yeah. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the policy. Kevin, can you facilitate a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Rivers?
Aye.
Councilmember Lemus?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey?
Yes. So that passes, and then we can move on to, we're going to do this table for, just 2023 for right now, right, Damian?
Yeah, so the, so the table is just for right now. Obviously, the, the City Council can bring up requests of proclamations at any time during the year, but this will just at least establish an initial list of proclamations and any related flags or flag raising ceremonies.
Okay. So we really, since June and July are passed, we really, from this table's perspective right now, only need to deal with August, September, October, and November, correct?
That's all we need to deal with, yeah. The idea would be that we'd bring this back during the normal council assignment?
Right.
Item in January?
So we would do 2024 in January with all the rest of our assignments?
Yeah, for that, and that would be for the full year, full calendar year?
Right, right. Is everybody okay with that?
Well, can I propose that we, I know there's nothing on the list for January, but we at least cover January in the previous year, since we will never get to it in time. You know what I mean? So each January, we consider through the next January.
That makes sense.
And I was just going to ask, when in January does that happen? So there's enough time to plan for February?
Usually, it's the first meeting.
Okay, so that would give them two weeks to, to plan for February? Okay.
Does that work for everyone?
It's fine with me.
Okay. So we have August, Women's Equality Day Proclamation. Women's Equality Day proclamation, and there is no flag nor a flag ceremony. Is that correct?
Um, I'd, so in terms of the flags, um, I, I can't say that there was exhaustive research done to look for flags, but, because when you look, there's actually, oftentimes, there's multiple choices. And so, um, my thinking there is that if, uh, someone wants to, wants a flag, then I would work with the organizing lead to select the flag that would be the appropriate flag.
Okay.
I, I have a question.
Okay.
Does someone, Women's Equality Day proclamation, is that, is that requested by anyone? Because I, we also see Women's History Month on here. So I don't know if that's something that is regularly requested by a group, or is there a way we can combine it, or? I'm just trying to understand the difference.
Most of the, um, most of the pre-existing, so the non-bolded, um, items were requested. I mean, with the exception of, this year, we did, um, we did Pride in, uh, Juneteenth, as you guys know. But, um, aside from those, the other ones that are not bolded were, um, pre- previously requested by a community group. In some cases, they weren't necessarily annually requested, but they're requested in the last couple of years when this table was put together. So I think it's up to the council if they, if they want to, um, take up that proclamation, or just wait until we receive a request from someone?
I mean, yeah, if there's a specific group requesting a proclamation for, you know, for themselves, for a specific reason. But it seems like if not, it can be rolled into Women's History Month in Feb- in, um, March.
I guess that seems reasonable. If someone requests that, then we'll, then we'll do it.
Mayor Harvey? I can, uh, provide a little information on this one. Actually, just last week, we did get, uh, requested for the Women's Equality Day proclamation, um, by, uh, Caitlin Quinn, uh, who describes herself as an advocacy enthusiast on behalf of the Sonoma County Commission on the Status of Women. So that was specifically for the Women's Equality Day proclamation, uh, which I believe is August 26th is the day.
Okay, well, it's helpful. So is everyone okay with that, since we've had a request for that?
Yes, mm-hmm. Thank you.
Can I, can I follow up that discussion a bit with some of the others on the list? I know we're not covered. Oh, sure, go, go ahead.
Um, yeah, just, uh, I just wanted to check. So on the 26th, uh, Caitlin or someone from her organization will come to receive the proclamation. But this is not, it doesn't require an organizational lead because it's not a flag raising, correct?
That, that's correct, yeah. It's only required if there's more than just a proclamation. A proclamation we can handle, the mayor and I can handle.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I agree with that. And, and some of the others on the list that aren't, um, council-initiated, I would like to put in the same category as that Women's Equality Day proclamation and not have them on our list and handle them like we always have proclamations, where if requests come in, then they go to the mayor and the mayor, you know, issues them at a meeting. For instance, one of the ones that I wonder about is National Surveyors Week, which I haven't, I think surveying is a great profession, and there are hundreds of other professions, and I wonder why we ha- put it on our annual list. So I'm happy to, you know, provide it when it's requested, but not put it on the council list of what we're gonna do every year automatically.
And that one, that is one that, for a very long time, um, has been requested every year.
Right, I understand. But I'm, but I would just propose we not, yeah, we not list it on our list. We just deal with it like we always have when a request comes in.
So just to clarify, is this meant to just be like, so is my understanding that this was, um, just a general list of the whole year of all the proclamations we've been asked for in the past, that we may or may not be asked for in the future? And then we were, uh, at least I thought we were supposed to kind of go through for the ones that we might want to lead if there is a flag and we want to have a flag raising ceremony. So it might still be useful to have it on here, even if we are not gonna, you know, the council ourselves are not gonna do anything specifically for it, just to know that it's coming. Was that the intention?
Well, the, the list originally was developed just, it was just to give the council an idea of the types of proclamations that had been requested in the past, just so you have, as, as you think of what you want to bring forward, you have an idea of what else might be happening in that same month. So I, I, I mean, you know, one approach could be to, um, as Councilmember Ford suggests, just focus on the ones that the council's bringing forward. And the other ones, we could just rely on, um, a third party approaching the mayor or someone to bring a proclamation forward and not actually list it in a final list of things that we would talk about, like in January, for example.
Like have a separate council list?
Yeah, like, well, so we, you know, the, I think that approach would be that the council selects certain things that they want to see. And, um, that would be, we could narrow this list down in this exercise tonight, but we also could do that in January. And as other groups approach us throughout the year, they could just be added as proclamations are requested.
Right.
Right, rather than programmed for us to go out and look for someone to come receive it.
Um, yeah, I agree. And I had a question, too, that even if there's not like a lead needed for, say, a flag raising ceremony, I think there should still be leads assigned to somebody so that we can make sure that we work with staff or, um, through the mayor, try to identify community members to come and kind of receive a proclamation, so that it's more, I feel, meaningful, you know, meaningful, um, for all these different, um, days that we have. Because not all of them may have a flag, but I think it's still good to have community representation here.
For, I, I would just say for council-requested items, that's probably not unreasonable, because
I'm sorry?
The ones that, the ones that come from the community, they already come with someone that wants to receive it.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas something generated from the council may not.
Okay. No, but what I mean is like if the community may not know that, oh, the Kattati were doing Black History Month, you know, but if one of us was kind of a lead, even though we weren't doing a flag raising ceremony, that we could kind of help staff and kind of identify groups or, um, to come on that day or something. So we would still maybe assign a lead or something for those? That was my, my thought for that.
So do you all want to assign a lead to all of these? Is, that's the suggestion?
It would not be my, my suggestion would be that we, we do more, the, kind of split into two lists. One is a list of proclamations that are commonly requested of the city. And, and somehow, it could just be a notation within the same list, like these are commonly requested. And we don't initiate those as a council or city. We wait, and if we get a request, then we tell them, can you have somebody there to receive it? Okay, we'll do it, um, as long as it's something that is consistent with the city's values. But, but if there are some on this list that we want to make sure happen, then we indicate that, that these are council-initiated, and we assign a lead, I think is what Councilmember Lemus was, what I understood, Councilmember Lemus to be saying. So I would, I would strike a number, I, I would indicate a number of them are in the commonly requested category, like Women's Equality Day proclamation, um, Bullying Prevention Month proclamation, Children's, most of the ones that aren't bolded, um, are, are historically requested, and we would somehow indicate that in a, in some font that makes it clear, we're not initiating those. They're just on here for information.
And, and all of them are, right? You were saying if it's not boldened, then it's, uh, requested from the community? Is that correct?
I mean, ultimately, it's requested by a council member through a community request, right, but.
But I mean, someone asked for the proclamation from the community. If it's not bold, that came from a community member, not directly from the council. Is that correct?
Yeah, the ones.
Right, organization.
Right.
Juneteenth and Pride aren't bolded on here, and my understanding is that was a council, uh, requested?
Yeah, they're all, so.
You're right.
Correct, yeah. So the bolded ones were the ones we got. The last time we met in June, the, the bold ones were added. And so the, so the bold ones are the ones the council has requested, plus Juneteenth and Pride Month.
Okay.
So those we would add to like the council kind of, um, initiated proclamations and/or flag raisings?
Right, so, so, yeah, so one approach would be to, um, as I'm.
Just go through them?
Is, is just go through the bold ones, which is a much shorter list, and assign organizing leads. And then the others, we can, as has been suggested, notate that they're just commonly requested proclamations, but not. We don't have to figure out what to do about them at this point until they get requested by someone from the community or a council member.
Will that work for everyone if we only assign a lead to the, um, bolded ones, since those are ones we added?
Um, yes, but can I go ahead and just get added to Pride and Juneteenth, since they just happened? And, and they already have the Xs, just not the organizing, organizing lead? And then move forward with what has not happened yet? Is that okay?
I guess, yeah. Well, I mean, they've already happened, so, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, so then, um, Latino Heritage Month?
Yeah, I would like to take that one. Um, and can I also say another one that I want to take, and then partner, if anyone else wants to partner on it?
All right.
Okay, I want the, uh, Native American Heritage Month.
Okay.
And then I'm, yeah, I'm willing to partner with any other council members.
Okay. So then Breast Cancer Awareness Month?
Um, do we know what, uh, Councilmember Sparks wanted, since she's not here?
We do not.
One of us must have added this to the list at our last meeting. Everybody remember?
Well, this, this happened because, remember, Kay put forth a list? And the only thing that was accepted was, were the items that were on Kay's list, because there were quite a lot of others. But the council at, at that day said they were only willing to add to the list the ones that Kay had in her letter. So that's how these got there. So do we have any takers for Breast Cancer Awareness Month?
I, I, I don't know. I feel like Disability Employment Awareness Month is more encompassing. Is it? Or is it very different?
Yeah, I think there might be another one, Disability Awareness. I don't know where the other one is. Is it on here?
It's on there under, under October.
No, the, not the employment, the other one. I thought there was just like a Disability Awareness Month, but I don't see it on here right now.
There was Mental Health Awareness Month, maybe. Maybe that was when you were thinking.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll, I'll, just to get this moving, so we're not here all night for this, I'll take Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
I'd be happy to take the next two.
Okay. And Ben, so, and then Sylvia got Native American Heritage Month. So we're good for 2023.
One, one correction on, um, Indigenous Peoples' Day. I should say Formerly Columbus Day, not formally.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, formerly, yeah. That looks like a spell check thing.
That is definitely a spell check thing, yes. Thank you. Okay, and just to clarify, um, so I have.
Want me to read it to you, Damian? Then you can check the list.
So, so actually, um, Sylvia, if it's okay, I've actually already been in contact with a few, um, Native people about the, um, month. It, would it be okay to partner with you on that, just to connect you with the people I've already spoken with?
Yeah, and then, yeah, and then I can, like, think, people I was thinking about reaching out to, then we can work together.
Okay, thank you. So if you can please, uh, we'll co-lead that one.
Okay, so I'm gonna start from the top. Uh, Juneteenth, we've got Kay. Uh, Latino Heritage Month, we've got Sylvia.
Wait, Pride Month, too.
Oh, yeah, Pride.
Well, that's, okay, it's not on here, but are you gonna put it back in?
No, it is, it is on there. It's probably, it's just above the, it's on packet page 64. It's just right at the very bottom of the page.
Oh, I, oh, wait. Oh, this is the thing that got the weird printing problem.
Oh, yes, okay.
And I have the packet that probably doesn't have that on it, so that's why.
Okay, yeah, thank you. There's just two.
Thanks, yeah. I have a bad copy.
Okay, thank you.
So we've got Pride Month is Kay, Juneteenth is Kay, uh, Latino Heritage is Sylvia, Breast Cancer Awareness Month is Susan, uh, Disability Employment Awareness Month is Ben, um, Indigenous Peoples' Day is Ben, and Native American Heritage, uh, Month is Sylvia and Kay.
Yes.
Perfect. And maybe, um, when Laura comes back, she can partner with somebody on one of those if she wants.
Yeah, and if she wants one of those, then I'm sure that, that we can negotiate around that.
Yeah.
So Damian, you have that?
Um, it, yes, I do. And let me just add this, too. So, um, for Pride and Juneteenth, we have flags and flag raising ceremonies.
Yes.
For the others, we have no flag, no flag raising ceremony. We're talking proclamations.
Well, actually, one of the questions that I'm working with, um, uh, Ladonna Feather, um, Madonna Feather, is about the flag for Native American Heritage Month. So she's looking into that for us, to see if, if, if there is one, because there's many, right? And which one would be appropriate. So she's looking into that. She's, uh, at a conference right now, but when she gets back, she's gonna get back to me.
And there is Hispanic Heritage Month. I haven't seen a Latino Heritage Month. And, you know, there's a lot of kind of controversy with Hispanic, Latino, you know, so I'm trying to be correct about it.
But.
So, let me ask you this. Do we want to put a flag on there? In case there is a flag, so we don't have to come back around? And if there isn't, then it becomes, you know, non-applicable?
Yes.
Is that, okay. And is that for both the Latino Heritage as well as the Native American?
Yes.
Yes.
And ceremonies also?
Yes.
Sure, we can get some great music.
Okay, all right. So Damian, did you catch those who are joining to go through that again?
I, I got it. Thank you.
So, and, and I just want to remind us that, you know, the policy we just approved says that once a year, we'll go through and we'll hold a vote about which ones are gonna have flags. So by January, we have to be ready and know which ones will have flags next year.
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah.
And hopefully, yeah, we'll, we'll know by then.
So is now the time to take that vote for these two and affirm that we want to hold flags for them? Or do you want to wait and find out if there really are flags before we hold that vote?
Well, if we have the vote and then there are not flags, we just don't do it, right?
Right.
Yeah, I, that was gonna be my suggestion now, is that, I mean, given the lack of, we don't know. Be better just to, if the council agrees to do it, just do it. And if we can't find a flag or whatever, then we just won't do it.
Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
Okay, so then I would be looking for a motion, um, given what we just laid out in this table.
I would move that the council, um, agreed to display commemorative flags for Latino Heritage Month and Native American Heritage Month in 2023.
Second?
And hold, sorry, and hold flag raising ceremonies.
And I forgot to wait for you, Sue. I apologize. I'll wait.
No, that's okay.
Okay, second.
Second, um, and we've already taken public comment on this item, just to remind everyone. So with that, uh, Kevin, can you do us the pleasure of a roll call vote?
Councilmember Rivers?
Aye.
Councilmember Lemus?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey?
Uh, yes, yay. So we now have a policy, and we have our beginnings of, um, flags and flag ceremonies. So with that, we will move on to, um, city manager's report.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, um, we are, um, I've, I mentioned this before, but we're getting ready to, um, start the transition away from Nixol for emergency alerting and, uh, moving to a new platform called Civic Ready. So it's emergency alerting and, uh, community messaging. Um, and we're gonna be start, starting to, uh, put out messaging in, um, early August, letting people know about the new platform and hopefully starting to migrate people over. And, um, we're looking.
What was the name of it? I'm sorry, the name of it again? The name of the new system?
Civic Ready.
Civic Ready.
Yeah. And so that's, um, anyway, that's gonna be going on through the month of August and part of September before we officially transition away from Nixol. So we'll be doing both during that period of time and getting, hopefully getting everyone moved over that still uses it. It's.
Can I, is it gonna be in Spanish as well, the new one?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, Public Works Projects. So we have Katahdie Park, the park. And the park is in the playground areas. The playgrounds are all inspected. They're officially open. So there's people, I was there today, and there was a lot of people at the park. Really, it was pretty cool to see. The one thing that's not quite open yet is the restroom. So plan on that if you happen to be there until the restroom opens. So PG&E has to move the meter, the electric meter, to the restroom so that we can actually run power to the restroom and actually open the facility. So soon, it should be any day that we get that. But if anyone asks why the restroom's not open, that's why, because it does not have power yet, but very soon. This road project, Quick Strike, is just about done. Just some remaining striping and lighting and punch list items left on that. The 2023 reconstruction, which is the one along Myrtle in those back areas there, that's, again, also essentially done, except for punch list items. We have, we did open bids on the park and ride replacement project. And so we're still working through that internally on funding that project. And we plan to bring it forward on August 8th. We think we found a path to funding that'll work. And the bid, we got at least a low bid that was much lower than the engineer's estimates. That's the good news. But it's still a little bit more than the price of the property. So that's the funding gap we're working through. But you all will be seeing that soon. And then you proved it tonight, but we're going to be, we're going to be working on finalizing design for the 2024 pavement maintenance project, which is crack sealing and repairs and slurry seals for Gravemstein Way area and also right out here, School Street in this neighborhood behind us. So that's what's coming up this fall. The Redwood Drive and Cypress Avenue pavement reconstruction, that was a grant project, or partially grant project. And that's, design is done, and we're going to be bidding it this winter and going into construction in the spring. So those are two big roadways that are in poor shape that need to be reconstructed. So it's good to see that moving along. And also some Cypress Sewer Avenue repairs, that's also on the docket ahead of the road paving project. And so we'll be seeing more on that as we get closer to that project starting. On development projects, the hotel, I'm sure, as you know, they're busy grading out there. So that's, that's what they've been busy working on. And we expect them to start some initial utility work as soon as next week, potentially, but over the next two weeks. And then I do expect improvement plans and the dedications, the property dedications, to come to council, hopefully on August 8th, so that's just right around the corner as well. I get this question a lot because people are anxiously waiting for Acre Pizza to open on 116, and they're open in case anyone wants to go out there and check out their pizza. So they're officially open. It just, it just took a long time. But it's just, you know, I don't know, contracting these days, it seems like it- Yeah, hopefully I don't lose any products in that, but, yeah. And then just a reminder that we got a grant for the Santero Way specific plan update. And so we're working on bringing that to council, I think, on the 8th as well. So the next meeting will be kind of an important meeting with a lot of really, you know, great things happening. And that grant is from MTC for a little over $400,000 to update the specific plan out at the train station. Next Tuesday, August 1st, is our National Night Out Day. And we have a free movie in the park as well as free dinner. It starts at 6:00 PM. And we have Cohita Mexican and also Flagship Tap Room providing the food there, so it should be pretty good. And the movie is DC League of Super Pets that we have on the screen. That's going to be at sunset, so probably about 8:30 PM. And I encourage you guys to come out if you are interested or tell your friends about it. We're also going to have, in addition to our city staff and police department, we also will have Rancho Adobe Fire there, and the safety team will be there, too. So it's going to be a fun night for everyone. Last week, we finished our fourth and final farm camp. And each week was a huge success. This weekend, we have our North Bay Theater, Summer Theater in the Park performances of the greatest show taking place in La Plaza Park on Saturday, July 29th, from 3:00 to 6:00. So it's a kids' theater, and they're going to be in the park this Saturday. And then we have summer camp still, Camp Katahdie Summer Camp through August 10th. And we have full and half-day options available. So if anyone's looking for space for something, something fun for your kids to do, that's still running until school starts. And then Friday night, this Friday night, is our July Kids Night Out event. It's from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. And it is basically date night for adults. If you want to drop your kids off and they can hang out and have fun with other kids in the camp. Just a reminder, we still are doing the free lunch. We do that every day, Monday through Friday, free lunch in the park. Actually, I'm sorry, it's at the community center for anyone under ages 18 and under between noon and 12:30. And you don't have to register for it in a camp, or, and there's no sort of pre-registration required. You just show up and we provide that free lunch while school is out for kids. Farmer's Market is still going on in La Plaza Park every Wednesday from 4:30 to 7:30, and that goes through the end of September. And there's lots of great stuff there. So I'd encourage everyone to go if you haven't been. And I talked about Katahdie Park earlier, but we're officially announcing we're going to start to get the word out that Wednesday, August 15th, from 1:00 to 3:00, we're going to celebrate the reopening of the park and the new additions. So that's, that's for everyone, you know, we welcome anyone to attend the reopening of the park on that day. And then lastly, on the park news, this is a lot of park news. We have some changes happening at Putnam and Civic Center Park to the baseball fields. So we've been working with NorCal Oaks on those updates to the baseball fields. And those include new turf, dugouts, bleachers, backstops, and more. We also, at Putnam, are also working on the field configuration for middle school and JV age, so like freshman, sophomore-aged kids. And so the outfield fence is shifting a little bit, and we're getting the information together so that we can put that out, so people know what's happening there. But we're also, on August 12th, at 1:00 PM, we're going to have our first park workshop here in City Hall for Putnam and Cater. And that's also something we're going to be putting out this week to the community. And that's going to be the first of two meetings, and it'll be available in person or by Zoom. So here in City Hall or by Zoom if someone wants to attend remotely. And we're going to be talking about all the other planned improvements at Putnam and at Cater. We have a second workshop, September 16th, to follow up. So when we talked about the scope of work last time, we talked about the initial. So that initial workshop will be August 12th, it's a Saturday, by the way, in case anyone hears interested in coming, 1:00 PM. And that's just going to be the old, the 2019 concepts that we'll be talking through and just seeing what people think and what kind of input they have on that. And then the second one will be September 16th, which is also a Saturday. And that will be with some concepts based on the 2019 concept, plus any feedback received both in the workshop on August 12th. But also, we also will be having an online, like, survey and poll going on to collect input that way as well. And with that, I will, I think that's probably enough for tonight, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Anyone have any questions for the City Manager?
I have, I have one, Mayor. So on the NICSOL convert, you know, switch over, can we, like, just move our subscriber database over to the new system? Or is it going to require an affirmative action on the part of every subscriber?
Unfortunately, the latter.
Yeah, that's what I was afraid of. And I assume NICSOL is not going to be like Twitter, and they'll let us post messages on NICSOL about how to move to the new service?
Well, actually, we will be posting in NICSOL on how to move over.
Good.
Yeah, they don't prohibit us from doing that, but they don't allow us access to the subscriber list.
Uh-huh, okay.
But the new system will be our system that we have access to this subscriber list, so there shouldn't be a problem if we ever were to do this again in the future.
Okay. And then on the parks workshops, those will be run by the consultants?
So, yeah, the consultant will lead it. And then we'll have Parks and Rec staff here, as well as my planning lieutenant, too.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I have a question.
Yes?
Yes, at National Night Out, will there be staff helping people or telling how to sign up for the new system in English and Spanish?
That's a good idea for the emergency alerting system, yeah. We didn't have specific plans, but that's a good idea, and so I'll talk to staff about it.
I have a quick one. First, I want to say thank you for our new business cards and name tags. And then just follow up and ask for a timeline on this giant one behind us and the signs, like, coming into town. Do we have a timeframe for those?
So this sign, the directional signage in the corridors here at City Hall, as well as the marquee downtown, there's a logo on that marquee. Those are all in-
Like one on West Sierra, too, right, when you first come off the freeway? There's a big one there, too.
A wooden sculpture-looking thing?
Yeah.
The wooden sculpture, I think, is different. Yeah.
Well, I know that these three, so this one in the corridor and the marquee are in fabrication right now, so they should be soon. We expect, we expect that this will be, don't hold me to it, but this should be changed out before the meeting on the 8th.
Oh, wow, okay.
And then we're also working on all the entry signs, the post-mounted signs.
Okay, like the one on West Sierra, for example? Okay.
I'll have to go look at that one specifically to refresh my memories to what it is. But all the post-mounted signs are in, they're working on updating those to the wayfinding sign type, but with the new logos.
Okay, yeah, no, the one on West Sierra is just a big picture of him. A big sign, right when you come off the freeway.
They're all inevitable-
Damian, it's right by the, by the bus stop, is what she's talking about. There is a very different sign there.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll have to look at, I mean, I know what you're talking about for sure. I'll have to look at it.
Thank you.
Yeah, we still daily find-
More.
More around. It's going to take a while to kind of flush it all out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, if there are no more questions, then-
Mayor, actually, sorry to interrupt. The chief had one more thing to add on the emergency alerting.
Yeah, for Civic Ready, engaging the public and having them sign up is a good idea. So a thought would be, every year for the high-low drill, the police department, we have a booth at the farmer's market to talk about the high-low drill. And that sounds like a good opportunity to share the new Civic Ready platform. So I can add that to the presentation booth when we do the high-low drill. So it's a good thought.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think any kind of, anything where we have staff out there doing something, especially if we want to get as many people to sign up for it, yeah.
And like Spanish-speaking people to talk about it as well, yeah.
Okay, so are we ready to move on?
Yeah, that was it, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, no problem, no worries. It's hard to see because you're very small. So City Councilmember reports. Sylvia, do you have anything?
Yes, I'll go over my report. So July 2nd, I did a ride along with Katahdie Police Department, so that was really a great experience. I went July 2nd, so it was a Sunday before 4th of July, so it was kind of a loud night. There was fireworks going off in different neighborhoods that we wanted to go check out. So Sergeant Giro arranged for me to, I did almost a full shift. I was out there six hours. Half of, half of the time with Officer Ranky, and then half of the time with Officer Sullivan. So I got to ride in the vehicle. I saw the ALDA reader and how it works and what it does and some of the different systems they have in the vehicles. We stopped on certain areas where people don't stop. You know, maybe they do a rolling stop, or some don't, just plain don't even stop, they just go right through the stoplight, the stop sign. So it was a really interesting eye-opening, all the different calls they go on and get calls on. So that was July 2nd. July 6th, I was an alternate, but I got to step into the Sonoma Clean Power Board of Director meeting. They had a closed session. July 8th, Katahdie Kids' Day, I had a great time with Councilmember Rivers and Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ford and Vice Mayor Sparks and city staff, including City Manager. We threw candy out to the kids on July 8th. The 24th, yesterday, actually, I went to a meeting with the residents of Katahdie Villages. And just a little kind of, I wanted to just kind of mention that August 3rd, KBBF, which is a first bilingual radio station here in the nation, is celebrating, they're having a gala event on August 3rd, and I'm just really proud of their 50th anniversary. I was involved with them early on, so was many of my family members, so I'm really proud of the radio station. So that's all I have for today.
Great, thank you so much. Ben?
Yes, I also had a great time at the Kids' Day Parade. I got to ride it in a fancy hot rod because I couldn't walk. But I didn't pace myself on the candy distribution. I ran out before I got to the hub, so that was bad.
You still need training in that, Ben.
I know, I know. But it was a great crowd at the hub, at the La Plaza Park. It was really fun. So that was great. Sonoma Clean Power Board meeting, kind of the big item for me is the state pressures on community choice aggregation programs. The governor has been making some moves that would essentially kill them off. And they've successfully sort of pushed back against them so far, but it's a continuing threat because the governor, because there are problems statewide with adequate resources. And the governor sees sort of statewide procurement of electricity as the answer. And so that's squeezing smaller procurers like Sonoma Clean Power. So far, we're okay, but it's a worrying trend. The SCTA, RCPA Board meeting, the big news was the reports from the consultants on polling on a climate crisis sales tax or climate crisis revenue proposal. They did a lot of polling, and basically, the support is not there for either a sales tax or a parcel tax measure to get over the two-thirds requirement that would, that, they're both, they both poll barely over 50%. So there's, the board has backed off pursuing that for right now and is trying to figure out how we're going to get to our climate goals. So back to the drawing board on that right now. That's it.
Thank you. And thank you, Ben, for attending SCTAR, CPA for me. Really appreciate that. Kay?
Yeah, so unfortunately, my two great meetings that I could finally go to because school is out were canceled this month. But I did go to Farmster, and I just wanted to make sure people were aware, the first Sundays between 10:00 and 12:00, they have training for volunteers. So if you want to go, and they give you a tour, and they show you all the cool stuff they have there. And that was really cool, so I would encourage people to check that out. And just, I don't know how much of a city council, I mean, it's because I'm on the city council they came to me. But we have a potential land situation for library, so that's pretty exciting. Super early, and we're just working on making that happen. But there is a potential now, which is super exciting. And then the last thing I just want to make sure to say is Coffee with Kay will not be happening tomorrow. I have a conflict that I can't move. So Coffee with Kay, for the first time since before I sat in the seat, will be canceled just for this month, but we'll pick it right back up again next month, the fourth Wednesday of the month, 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Redwood Cafe. Come join me for potato skins. They're really delicious there. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I attended the Marin Sonoma Mosquito Vector Control District meeting on July 12th. There was nothing earth-shattering to report out of that. And kind of like Kay, I think July is just the month that a lot of meetings get canceled. So the Waste Management Agency meeting was canceled, and the LAFCO meeting was canceled. I think a lot of boards take that off, that month off. So everything will be back in swing come next month. So that is all I have to report tonight. And we can move on to public comments on non-action agenda items. Kevin?
Mayor Harvey, we have lost all of our attendees on Zoom and in the chamber, so that will end public comment.
Thank you so much for that. And then do we have any information received after the agenda was posted?
There was the attachment to item 11A that was rendering oddly on the PDF. So that was provided, as well as the comments from Councilmember Rivers, both provided to the council and here in the chamber.
both provided, uh, to the council and here in the chamber.
Great, thank you for that. And so with that, I will, um, adjourn this meeting at, you guys are in a different time zone. So I believe it's something like 7:39 there. We will call our meeting adjourned. Thank you and we'll see you guys in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.